Okay, at this time I call to order this public hearing of the Bonner County Hearing Examiner on October 1st, 2025 at 1:30 in the afternoon. We are located in the third floor conference room of the Bonner County-
At this time I call to order this public hearing of the Bonner County Hearing Examiner on-
Yeah, I love that voice. I can go ahead? We are located in the third floor conference room of the Bonner County Administration Building, 1500 Highway 2, Sandpoint, Idaho. We are streaming online via Zoom and YouTube. Is there anyone in attendance and in need of special assistance to see, hear, or participate in these proceedings? Okay, please take note of the hearing procedures on the screens, and I will be submitting my written decision within five business days of this hearing. So at this time I'd like to leave the room in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Any changes to today's agenda?
No changes.
No changes. Any announcements?
None.
No? So I didn't know if there actually was hearings for the, I mean, minutes for the 9/17/25 hearing, since it was so short. I didn't see any.
Well, we'll be able to-
Okay, cool. I'll wait till last month. Didn't notice that till this morning either, sorry, forgot about this. Okay. All right, so today we are starting out with File V 0012-25, a bulk increase. The applicants are requesting a variance for a bulk increase to allow for a 40% increase in bulk to accommodate a pergola on top of an existing deck over a boathouse within the shoreline setback. And I have no conflict of interest with this, so Dave? Sorry?
Dave Fisher, Bonner County Planning. Bulk increase for Rob Lecot, File V 1225. Apologize if I pronounced that wrong. Project summary. The applicants are requesting a variance for a bulk increase to allow for a 40% increase in bulk to accommodate a pergola on top of an existing deck over a boathouse within the shoreline setback. Project site is located off North Terrace Drive in Section 7, Township 55 North, Range 2 West Boise Meridian, and highlighted is the long, narrow parcel. Site plan on the bottom of the page, facing east, shows the pergola near the shoreline. Background, the land use is currently residential with a single-family dwelling. It's unplatted, .380 acres. Zoning designation suburban. Complan designation suburban growth area. Access is by North Terrace Drive, a privately owned and privately maintained easement. Environmental factors include slopes of 0 to 30% plus, mapped wetlands, and frontage on Coca-Cola Lake. Site is within special flood hazard areas Zone X and Zone AE. The water provider service wasn't provided. Sewers provided by individual septic system. It's within the Sagal Fire District, and power supplied by Northern Lights, and within the Lake Pend Ore School District Number 84. Applicable standards to this project. Agencies replying with a comment included Bonner County Planning Floodplane Review, the Idaho Department of Environmental Quality, and the Panhandle Health District. Agencies replying no comment included Bonner County Historical Society, Idaho Transportation Department, Kootenay-Pend Ore Sewer District, and TC Energy. Describing weather conditions applied to the property that do not apply generally to other properties in the same zone vicinity, which conditions are a result of lot size, shape, topography, or other circumstances over which the applicant has no control. The applicant responded, "The property is situated on a steep incline descending toward the lake, which limits the amount of level usable land for recreational or structural purposes. Unlike neighboring properties with gentler grades, this excessive slope restricts the possibility of constructing shade areas further inland. Without this variance, the exposure to direct sunlight would render the existing boathouse deck area largely unused-" I think that's supposed to be unusable during certain times of the year, constituting undue hardship." Staff's response, "The subject property is long and narrow, with slopes in excess of 30% plus between the shoreline and the existing dwelling. Many of the parcels in this area, including the adjoining parcels to the north and south, are more than twice as wide as the subject parcel. The parcel is approximately .380 acres in size, well below the minimum of 2.5 acres required in the suburban zoning district, where all urban services are not available." Explaining how special conditions and circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant, the applicant responded, "The existing boathouse deck is situated on top of the boathouse building, limiting options for shade structures without encroaching onto the standard setback. Adherence to the standard 40-foot setback would render the addition of shade providing structure unfeasible, limiting the full enjoyment of the property." Staff's response, "The applicant purchased the property in 2018 under instrument number 927259. The existing boathouse and dwelling were existing when the applicant purchased the property. The boathouse appears in historical imagery as far back as 2009, and appears to have been constructed in the 1990s, according to assessor data. The applicant did not choose this position, they just expanded upon it." Explaining how granting the variance is not in conflict with public interest, and that will not be detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare, or materially injurious to properties or improvements in the vicinity of the subject parcel or lot, the applicant responded, "The proposed pergola is a non-enclosed, open-air wood structure attached to the existing boathouse deck. This structure will not adversely affect water quality, shoreline stability, or local wildlife habitats. There are other older properties around the lake that feature similar structures with comparable setbacks, indicating the pergola would be in harmony with the surrounding area. The pergola will not impede public access, or obstruct views, or negatively impact the safety, health, or general welfare of the community." Staff's response, "This project does not appear to be in conflict with public interest. The project placed a partial covering over an existing structure without increasing setbacks, expanding the footprint, or increasing square footage. It increases the usability of the structure, but does not appear to have any effect on neighboring parcels or the public in general. All property owners within 300 feet of the subject parcel were notified, as well as public agencies. Idaho Department of Environmental Quality commented about setbacks and stormwater runoff. However, this added bulk would not increase the impervious surface, nor change the existing footprint. No other agency or public comment suggested that this project would be detrimental to public health, safety, and welfare, or be materially injurious to the surrounding properties or improvements in the vicinity." At the time this was written, no public comments had been received. Any questions?
No, thank you. Okay. Would the applicant like to present anything?
I would.
Please come up to the, you can either go up there with him, or you can stand right there.
How do you like my art?
Yeah, it's kind of like I giggled.
Yeah, you could tell I was involved. I just wanted to-
And if you could state your name for the record, please.
Rob Michelle, I own the property. When we bought the property, there was a rotten pergola on it with interwoven fabric that was all rotted out, and it was, we removed it right away because it was pretty bad. And then we went a few years, and we realized why it was there. So, yeah, we added a pergola to it already, not understanding that there would be an issue with it, because the building was already there. So, yeah, basically, it's just a boathouse with a deck on top, and we just put a pergola on the top of it. And then that was like four years ago. And then I got the letter from the county saying, "What you did is illegal." That started this whole thing. I didn't understand what a variance was until this education came along, so I just wanted to clarify, that's all we did, is to add a pergola to an existing deck that was already there. Thank you.
Thank you.
I did talk to my neighbors. Everybody's good.
Okay. Okay. All righty. Okay, so at this time I'm just going to go ahead and read the rules of testimony. If you wish to testify, you will need to please state your name for the record. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per person. You may give up to give your three minutes to another person, so they can have up to six minutes to speak, but no one will be allowed more than six minutes. Public comments are limited to the specifics of this application only. If you agree with another speaker, please just acknowledge agreement, no need to repeat information again. Any personal or derogatory comments about another person or their position will not be allowed. Clapping, cheering, or booing will not be allowed either. Is there anyone that has a written statement they'd like to enter into the record for this file? Okay. Any supporting public testimony in person or online? No one online? Any neutral public testimony in person or online? Any opposing public testimony in person or online?
Nope.
Okay. Anyone in the audience who did not sign up to speak that would like to enter any comments into the record? Okay. Well, nothing to rebut. That's always a nice day. Okay, so I'm going to close this hearing to this public, close the hearing to this public testimony, and close this file, V 0012-25. That's wrong. And we are going to move on to the next file. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so our next file is CUP 0005-25, a conditional use permit for a gravel pit. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for a gravel pit. The approximately 38.48 acre property is zoned agricultural forest 10. The project site is located off Curtis Creek Road in Section 28/33, Township 55 North, Range 4 West Boise Meridian. Project site is within the service areas of Spirit Lake Fire District and West Bonner County, West Bonner School District Number 83. I have no conflict of interest, it's all yours.
Thank you. Kyle Snyder, Bonner County Planning staff for the record. I'm going to be talking about CUP 0005-25, which is for a gravel pit. On the screen there, your, the applicable standards for review for this file. The applicants are requesting a conditional use permit for a gravel pit. Again, the proposed site is approximately 38.482 acres and is zoned agricultural forestry 10. Project site is located off Curtis Creek Road in Section 28 and 33, Township 55 North, Range 4 West Boise Meridian. On the screen there is the site plan that was submitted for this application, showing obviously your loading areas, your laydown areas, and then the general area for excavation. Some background on the site, it is currently unplatted. Again, that size is approximately 38 acres, zoned agricultural forestry 10, and the comprehensive land use designation is also ag forest land. Access is from Curtis Creek Road, which is a Bonner County-owned and maintained public right-of-way, and then a new private and ingress egress easement from Curtis Creek Road to the subject parcel. Some environmental features on the property, it clearly does contain some map slopes, as you can see in the GIS image to the right. Does not contain any mapped wetlands, and does not contain any mapped rivers, streams, or frontage on the lake, and it is all within SFHA Zone X, per the firm panel shown. As far as your services, water and sewage, not listed on the application. It is within Spirit Lake Fire District's, District, power supplied by Northern Lights, and West Bonner School District 83. So here's BRCRC 12-336, which is our resource-based use table, showing that mining, stone quarries, gravel pits, and stone mills are conditionally permitted in the AF zones. And we're going to go into the, a little bit more of those standards here. So, here, let me go back. So the notes under 3, 4, and 5 are all notes that I'm going to go over a little more in depth. So Note 3 says sufficient land area is required to accommodate the proposed use, and the use in any abutinent, that's a rough one, structure shall be so arranged on the land as to minimize any adverse effects on surrounding properties. You shall not create particular hazards to adjacent properties. So your staff analysis, subject property is approximately 38 acres. For the application, the only structures proposed are a portable shipping office and a scale with a shed, approximately 200 square feet in size. Per the application, all state and federal regulations will be adhered to, including all safety protocols. Boundary line adjustment was done prior to the limit, or prior to the application. Conditional use on to one property and therefore not have the use going across property lines. Property lines will be clearly marked and surveyed. Note 4, specified conditions with respect to emissions of noise, light, glare, smoke, odor, dust, particulate matter, vibrations, or hours of operations may be prescribed differently from those required in a given district, as to be compatible with other applicable state and federal standards. The applicant's narrative statement, minimal effects such as noise, light, glare, odor, fumes, and vibrations on adjoining properties will be seen as effects are rarely only seen from the short period of blasting. Proposed conditional use is expected to operate Monday through Friday, 7 to 4, and close for the winter season. Note 5, where access to the site is by road. The road shall be located within a recorded easement or public right-of-way, and constructed to the appropriate standards set forth in Title II of this code or Appendix A of this title. The applicant response on the application, Curtis Creek Road is a gravel county-owned and maintained road. A new private ingress egress easement will come from Curtis Creek Road across the Larson Trust Parcel to the south to access the subject parcel. Staff response, "No information regarding the status of the easement or the condition of the road was submitted with the application, and there is a condition of approval regarding that." Continuing on with your standards of review, ECRC 12-421, which is your performance standards for all uses. That says, "No land or building in any district shall be used or occupied in any manner creating dangerous, injurious, or otherwise objectional conditions which could adversely affect the surrounding areas or adjoining premises, except that any use permitted by this title may be undertaken and maintained if acceptable measures and safeguards to reduce dangerous and objectional conditions to acceptable limits as established by the following performance standards. You have A, which is your fire hazards. Any activity involving the use or storage of flammable or explosive materials shall be protected by adequate firefighting and fire prevention equipment. Such hazards shall be kept removed from adjacent activities to a distance which is compatible with the potential fire danger involved, as specified in the International Fire Code as adopted by the State of Idaho." Staff response, "The applicant has stated the proposed use will involve blasting. Fire safety plan was not submitted with the application, and fire protection measures are subject to review and approval by Spirit Lake Fire Protection District." Again, there's a conditional, condition of approval regarding that review. B, you have radioactivity or electrical disturbance, so no activity shall emit harmful radioactivity at any point or electrical disturbance adversely affecting the operation of any equipment at any point other than that of the creator of such disturbance. Staff, no harmful radioactivity or electrical disturbances are anticipated from the proposed use. Objectionable noise, as defined in this subsection, which is due to volume, frequency, or beat, shall be muffled or otherwise controlled. Air raid sirens and related apparatus used solely for public purposes are exempt from the requirement. For the applicant, the noise associated with this proposed use will only be noticed during short periods of blasting. Vibration, no vibration shall be permitted, which is discernible without the use of vibration detection instruments on any adjoining lot or property. Again, for the applicant, minimal vibration will occur during the short periods of blasting. Any use must be operated and maintained in conformance with the minimum air pollution control standards and regulations established by the Health Authority." There is a condition of approval regarding that. "Any use must be operated and maintained in conformance with the minimum water pollution control standards and regulations established by the Health Authority." Also a condition of approval. Enforcement provisions, the planning director, prior to giving zoning approval, may require the submission of statements and plans indicating the manner in which dangerous and objectionable elements involved in processing and in equipment operations are to be eliminated or reduced to acceptable limits or intolerances. See conditions of approval. And finally, your measurement procedures, methods, and procedures for the determination of the existence of any dangerous and objectionable elements shall conform to applicable standard measurement procedures published by American Standards Institute, New York, the Manufacturing Chemists Association Incorporated, Washington DC, United States Bureau of Mines, and the Health Authority. See conditions of approval. Your parking standards, so per Bonner County revised code, there are no specific parking minimums for gravel pits. The subject property has a large amount of open space, approximately four acres per a GIS estimate, for potential parking and loading areas. Per the applicant, loading areas can change depending on where the stockpile is, and parking will generally be near the entrance. Your sign standards, per the applicant, 14x8 signs showing who the owner is and the type of business is proposed. Building location permit will be required for the installation of the sign, and all applicable county setbacks shall be met. Design standards, you have 12451 for your applicability. Standards in Section 12453 of this chapter apply to all new development in the commercial, industrial, where commercial uses and services are proposed. Rural Service Center District, as well as all other commercial, multifamily, public, and industrial development in other zoning districts, unless otherwise noted. So mining, stone quarries, gravel pits, and stone mills are in BRCRC 12-336, which is our resource-based use table. Therefore, this section is not applicable. Your landscaping and screening standards. As far as staff, mining, again, mining, stone quarries, gravel pits, and stone mills can be found in the resource-based use table, and this section is not applicable to the proposed use. 12482, standards for specific uses for mining. A reclamation plan approved by the Idaho Department of Lands shall be applied for, and a copy of the application shall accompany the application for the conditional use permit. Temporary and permanent landscaping and safety fencing shall be provided around all excavations in urban areas. Site plan for the entire parcel shall be submitted with the application, identifying the location of any pits, stockpiles, hauling roads, processing facilities, equipment, or material storage, fencing, screening, and any other pertinent features. A reclamation plan shall also be submitted, showing the condition and topography of the land after material and structures have been removed. Rating stormwater management plan shall be prepared and submitted concurrently with the application for a conditional use permit pursuant to the standards of Subchapter 7.2. So your staff response, "At the time the staff report was prepared, the applicant has not submitted the application for the reclamation plan to the Bonner County Planning Department. The applicant acknowledges their requirement for the submission and approval of a reclamation plan from IDL. Staff also notes that BRCRC provides no standards of criteria by which staff could evaluate a mining reclamation plan prior to approval of this application." The permit will be conditioned that the applicant shall receive approval for and comply with all requirements of a reclamation plan. Then you have B, "The mined area shall not be located closer to the nearest property line or public right-of-way in a horizontal distance equal to 1 and 1/2 times the vertical depth of the mined area at any given point, except that steeper slopes may be permitted where certified by an Idaho license engineer. In no instance shall the actual mined areas extend to within 60 feet of the nearest property line or public right-of-way. Drains from areas disturbed by surface mining shall be filtered, treated, and contained on-site." There's a condition of approval regarding that as well. C, landowner shall apply dust debate- C, landowner shall apply dust abatement. There is a condition of approval regarding that requirement. No debris from the mining operation shall be placed or tracked onto public right-of-way by vehicles used for the operation. Also a condition of approval. Fugitive dust shall be controlled by the applicant at all times to the satisfaction of Idaho Department of Environmental Quality and consistent with the approved fugitive dust control plan. See conditions of approval. Applicant shall comply with all requirements of the reclamation plan. Similar response to the, that we already kind of read. See conditions of approval regarding that Idaho reclamation plan. All retail sales of materials on-site are prohibited. Condition of approval regarding that. Signs on-site shall comply with the standards of Subchapter 4.4 of this title. Again, the applicant's proposing one four by eight signs showing who the owner and type of business is, and the signs shall meet all applicable setbacks. The applicant shall install and maintain hazard fencing and signing to warn of the mining danger to the satisfaction of the Bonner County Planning Department. The applicant shall maintain or restore vegetative buffering on the site where feasible. So your 12-7.2, which is your grading stormwater management and erosion control plans. No grading stormwater management plan was submitted with the application. The permit will be conditioned that a stormwater management plan shall be prepared, submitted, and approved by Bonner County Engineering Staff prior to issuance of the CV. Your hillsides, geotechnical analysis is required for a proposed development where the natural slope equals or exceeds 30%. There are small portions of the site where county GIS LiDAR resource indicate that the slope exceeds 30%. Staff response, no geo-tech has been submitted by the applicant. The dynamic and continually changing nature of the mining operation would likely render a traditional geotechnical analysis difficult. Purpose of this project is to remove material from the site. So the proposal does not appear to be in conflict with the policies of the implementation component of the comprehensive plan, and the proposal is discussed in greater detail relative to the individual policies in the staff report. So at the time the staff report was prepared, we have received public comments on this file. A full list of agencies noticed for the file can be found in the attached Appendix A of the staff report. Alling agencies did provide a comment, and that's IDWR and Bonner County Roden Bridge. Alling agencies replied no comment, and that was Kootenay-Ponderay-Super District and ITD. All other agencies did not reply. Any questions for me?
I don't, thank you. Do you have enough water?
I do, I brought it.
I thought we were going to do a pure leaf run here with Dave and I. Okay, so if the applicant would like to present? Thanks, Kyle.
Travis Howler, 7B Engineering, for the record. Perfect. Thank you, Kyle. Thank you to Jackie, Hearing Examiner. Thank you to the planning department, and thank you to the public for being here today. Almost go through the stuff that I think needs to be a little bit further explained as the representative. There's always a little bit more to the story. There we go. So, site location, I think, is very important. Reason being, because there is an existing gravel pit down off Spirit Lake Cut Off, and you see that down the, towards the center bottom of that aerial imagery. The parcel is in yellow. We can see this project site, the 38 and a half acres, is sandwiched in between to the north, the Hoodoo Mountain Road, county-owned, county-maintained road, as well as Curtis Creek Road to the south. The blue there, that is Curtis Creek, as the National Hydrology Dataset has it mapped. So we can kind of get a much better idea of exactly where we're at. I also want to point out that you can see on the north half of the project site, there are three properties that border the northern half. And so two of those are actually owned by the applicant. And then the trust, who we did the boundary line adjustment with, is the other owner. I think that also plays into play here. You can see a little bit better, on the left here, we have the boundary line that was recorded. The 322 feet is from, across the land, excuse me, the trust property, 322 feet away from the nearest private to the west, private adjoining landowner. And that is parcel 1A, which is owned by the land trust. That is 120-plus acres. Then we have a 519 across what is parcel 2A. Parcel 2A is owned by the applicant, and so 519 feet away from the nearest to the north adjoining private landowner. And on the southern half, we have all of the southern half property line orders the trust property and the private, the nearest private adjoining landowner. It's roughly 439 feet to their residence from our property line. But I do want to know, it is zero feet to their property line. And then off to the right here, we have the site plan that was submitted. I would like to bring up the access. So at the time when this application was put in, we just went with the, with the access that was there. So, as I said previously, this has currently been a gravel pit. It has been a gravel pit for over 100 years, but as a private gravel pit. So, providing for the trust, family, and friends. And so, when this was kind of talked about and brought up, it made sense that the current owner of the current gravel pit, that gravel pit is starting to reach its lifespan. And it's about half a mile away to the north. It made sense that the operation would essentially cease and reclaimate the current gravel pit and just move everything over to the, to this new gravel pit. I do want to point out that this gravel pit, with the operation that is going to happen on this property, with the amount of material that we think is there, and with the equipment and everything that is coming over, there is no increase in equipment or anything like that. Same manpower, same number of haul trucks, gravel trucks on the road. This, this mine looks to be at least to produce for over 100 years. So, that north half, you can kind of see, there's a property line kind of in the half right where it kinks over. Just even to get up to there is going to take about 25 years. So, so there's definitely a lot of room to grow here. And so, it made sense. The access I brought up, because we don't have a recorded easement. It's been in, in the trust, and so there was really just an agreement, hey, go, go for it, go get some gravel. Well, because of Bonner County Code and because we're going to meet it, it needs to be a recorded easement. The question is, where do we put that? So because of that property access is three lots, it is looked at as a road. And therefore, it needs to be, it needs to meet the standard of the code for gravel pits. However, we've been discussing potential easements. Those are the two that are currently at the top of our list for option one and two of accessing the property. The, the bottom one coming diagonal is still off Curtis Creek. It's the shortest distance to the, to the public road. And then there's another easement we're entertaining, and that's the horizontal one coming off Hoodoo. And that, again, is a county-owned, county-maintained road, potentially having an easement there. What that allows is that takes away from what we were proposing, and it now makes this, by definition, a driveway. So I'll get to that a little bit later, but just for, wanted to bring that up. So, as I mentioned before, there's a current gravel pit that the applicant is operating. You can kind of see that down there. And then the historical use, the one we're proposing to expand and bring up to the resource-based for commercial use. No additional equipment or manpower is anticipated to be needed. So, everything that is currently happening now is going to just continue to happen. So there's not an expansion or anything, just a new site. Like I said, it's, that family private pit on the subject property has been there for over 100 years. And the current gravel pit has no safety violations and meet all regulatory and environmental standards. So not only do we have a good spot that has historical use of the gravel pit, but we also have an applicant who has a history of meeting all those standards with the current pit as well. So they know what they're getting themselves into, and they know how to meet all those compliance. So as staff brought up, we have to meet a bunch of conditions. The three main ones with the resource-based use table in 12-3. We have to meet three, four, and five. So I won't go over what three is, but with the proposed minimal structures that we're proposing on this, we really meet that part of code with the portable office building and employee shack. And then we also have, operations are downhill, working towards the center of the larger 120 acres. So you can see here that the operations are going to be really centered and not against a neighboring property, or at least the 400 feet away. So from the nearest one. And then, condition four, the specified conditions having to do with all those, the noise, light, yada, yada, and so forth. Like I said before, we're meeting and are going to meet the, all the state and federal regulations, plus the conditions of approval make us adhere to that. And that's the reason for the conditions of approval. And then with the blasting, blasting is anticipated to occur only one time per year, with some years being up to three or four. That's an estimate, and really, the current operation, the current gravel pit, is blasted once a year. And where additional blast will be required is if all of a sudden, say, Roden Bridge came and said, hey, we want to use you, can you please supply us? And then all of a sudden, oh, sorry, we need to ramp up our operation. But right now, one time per year. And so I do want to make it clear that the applicant is completely open and transparent in notifying the public and notifying anybody that needs or would like to be notified when blasting is going to occur. And so there's also a condition of approval in there that, that leads to that, that we're going to have to meet. And then number five, where access to the site is by road. The road will be located within a recorded easement or public right-of-way and constructed to the appropriate standards set forth in Title II or Appendix A. And so, this is where that new easement has come up, and we haven't applied for it, or the recorded easement. That's because we're really trying to find what works best for the applicant and the proposed use. But by definition, a driveway is a private easement or roadway that provides access to two or fewer single-family residence lots or parcels. So what we're proposing here is a change, or we would like to see condition B3. So, everything that is changed is in red. And so the applicant shall apply a copy of the recorded easement, providing access for the subject property. But we would like it to be changed that if access to the site is by road or street, or becomes accessed by a road or street, we're fine, meeting those engineering standards, bringing it up to the private road, the Title II or Appendix A. But we would like to also have the flexibility that if we do put in an easement, a new access to that property, that meets the definition of a driveway to not be required to provide engineering plans. As staff went through, there is a specific use in 12-482 of Bonner County Revised Code that goes through this. I'll run through it real quick. But A, a reclamation plan that is pending. They can be very expensive, and until we get approval, spending that kind of cash sometimes can be difficult. B1, B2, B1 is the mine area should not be closer. We will maintain that setback, adhere to that, and have the property lines properly marked, because that's really the only way you know that you are meeting that. Drainage for the disturbed areas will be filtered, treated, and contained on-site. Stormwater management plan, that is a condition of approval, that addresses all the drainage on, on-site. C, dust abatement, this will be maintained and adhered to, no problem. Magnesium chloride or other suppressants, the current gravel pit does use magnesium chloride. So again, the applicant knows the regulations, knows how to do this. D, no debris on, tracked off-site. This will be, again, maintained and adhered to. Again, the current gravel pit, they know how to do this and keep all material on-site. E, the fugitive dust will be controlled to the satisfaction of ID, the Department of Environmental Quality. Again, the current gravel pit does do this, we will meet that. Also the use of a water truck, which the current gravel pit does. F, comply with all the reclamation plans, that's fine, we will. G, all retail sales, again, we will. H, signs on-site, again, that is with the condition of approval, that if we erect a sign, a building location permit is needed. I, install and maintain hazard fencing and signing to warn of mining danger. Fencing and signage will be erected to deter and warn of the mining. That is a condition of approval. Eight dash 12, maintain and restore vegetation buffer on-site. Again, vegetation restoration will take place at time of reclamation and be included in the approved IDL reclamation plan. I do have a slide in here, I do want to speak to the public and read through all the letters. Appreciate the letters, the concerns, shows that you care, I, I like that. I do want to show you, though, that we have taken and addressed all these concerns. Noise, blasting is once a year on average. We really don't plan on going more. Again, the current gravel pit is there, and we've never had any complaints of noise with that one. Dust and air quality, again, magnesium, magnesium, the dust abatement stuff, water trucks, air quality. Again, we're currently meeting that on the current, and we plan on meeting it with the new one. Public safety, distance, proximity to the operations. This new pit is actually going to be further away from residents than the new one is. Water availability and quality, groundwater and surface water, this was also brought up. Water availability, we're not proposing on taking, using any more water. We're not drilling any wells, so water availability should stay the same. Water quality, water quality is with the Idaho Department of Environmental Quality. We will have to meet that, plus our stormwater management plan is going to address the, the quality and the surface water. Traffic and road conditions, as I've talked before, the traffic is still going to be the same. We're just having those haul trucks now over on the new pit. And road conditions, road conditions, we will adhere to all Roden Bridge standards that they want us to. For the access, if we need to engineer it because it's a road or a street, that's fine. Fire risk, part of the conditions of approval. We need to get in touch with Spirit Lake Fire and get their, their approval and sign off for all the hazardous material. Make sure that it meets International Fire Code, IFC, as well as any other things on-site in order to get their approval. So, there, there's a few other things that we would like to propose, slight changes. Not that we're trying to say that we don't want to do anything. It's just, I think this more aligns with the applicant and the direction that we would like to go if the hearing examiner so chooses. With condition of approval, eight dash 12, again, the red is new and/or striped. The applicant shall install and maintain hazard fencing and signing to warn of mining danger. We would like to take out that Bonner County reserves the right to inspect and require changes to the required hazard fencing and signing for the life of the use. We would like to change that too, to really define where that signing and fencing is going to be. It's a little ambiguous, and putting a fence around 38 acres is quite a task. It's a little ambiguous and putting a fence around 38 acres is quite a task. And so we like to change it near the entrance, which makes sense, notifying people coming in onto site through the entrance. Active mining area, this being that, hey, we're actively mining here and any hazardous areas, high walls or areas that potentially with blind spots, that kind of stuff. And as required by MSHA, so MSHA is the Mine Safety Health Administration, which oversees all gravel pits and mining operations and on the federal level and to the satisfaction of Bonner County Planning Department. So slight different wording, I think better defines exactly what that eight dash 12 condition of approval is. Post slight change in approval in condition B dash three, the applicant shall submit a copy of the recorded easement providing access for the subject property. If access to the site is by a roadway or street or becomes accessed by a road or street, a stamped road design and as-built confirming that the access road is constructed to the appropriate standard set forth in Title II or Appendix A of this title and approved by the Bonner County Engineering Department shall be submitted. If access to the site is by driveway, no engineering is required. We would like that. And then there's condition of approval B dash five, this was by the Bonner County GIS Department, made a comment. We would like to make this from a B condition, which is prior to issuance to an A condition, an A16, and read, if access to the site is by a roadway or street or becomes accessed by a road or street or provides access to three or more residents as GIS sees it, the applicant will need to apply for an address and road name, not, not prior to this application because if we can prove that it is a driveway, then. So again, those kind of new areas. So you can see these gravel pits are, need to be adaptable to the site conditions, but also we need to meet those standards. And so with a slightly new site plan showing a new access, but the use on the property is not changing and the locations of everything are still there, we think that we've given enough evidence, enough argument where a site plan, pending a new site plan, this CUP can get approved today with all the conditions and if possible with those revisions to some of those.
I don't have any, you've covered a lot, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate how thoroughly you were. Okay. All right, so at this time, I'm not going to go ahead and reread the rules of testimony unless someone new came in since I read them the first time. Okay, good, thank you. All right, is there anyone who has a written statement they'd like to enter into the record at this time that they haven't done? Any supporting public testimony in person or online? Anyone online? Okay. Any neutral public testimony in person or online? Still no one online. Any opposing public testimony in person or online? Go ahead and step up to the microphone and then make sure you guys give your name for the record, please.
Sean Phillips. I'm here as a concerned resident and landowner in the Hoodoo Mountain area to express my strong opposition to the proposed application for the gravel pit involving blasting and mining operations on Hoodoo Mountain. Based on my review of the proposal, my knowledge of the surrounding area, I believe that the application is incomplete and therefore should be at least postponed if not denied, and that the proposed activity fails to meet requirements for the following reasons. One, the proposed use is not in alignment with the comprehensive plan. Given the steep topography, proposed blasting, and the traffic levels described in the application, the record does not establish that the use will avoid hazards or dangers to people or adjacent properties or how it will do so, nor that it aligns with the comprehensive plan's policy that the commercial and industrial uses should be located and operated to protect clean air and water, clear skies, and rural character. Reason two, the following required submittals for mining standards are missing or not evident by the application. Copy of the Idaho Land, Department of Lands Reclamation Plan, grading stormwater management plan, a site plan for the entire parcel showing pits, stockpiles, haul roads, processing equipment, screening, fencing, et cetera, required by 12-482 subsection A. Dust and debris controls at no cost to the county are also undefined in the proposal. There are no technical studies demonstrating for reason three, why the proposal fails key resource-based use standards. There are no technical studies demonstrating that the blasting, on-ramp excavation, and hundreds of heavy truck trips weekly won't be adverse and potentially hazardous. No engineering plans for compliant easements are provided. To my knowledge, the only current access road into the proposed area is from Curtis Creek Road, which involves a small wooden bridge that is not conducive to the level of high traffic, heavy trucks, and machinery set forth in the proposal. A traffic plan is required but not provided despite the heavy truck volumes. And this is kind of the biggest one, mining activities must be temporary and limited in lifetime and scope, but blasting out the side of the mountain would be a permanent change to the terrain. This negatively impacts property value according to professional realtors. Reason number four, hillside safety information is absent. When land disturbing activity is proposed, where natural slopes are greater than or equal to 30%, a conceptual engineering plan and a geotechnical analysis for such conditions is required, none are provided. Reason number five, wetlands due diligence has not been professionally verified. Reliance on a web screenshot alone is not a professional reconnaissance as required by code. And Curtis Creek is a wandering creek, which means it changes sometimes over time, depending on water flow. It flows through several properties near the proposed site, including my own, and flows into the community's aquifer. Any impact on this, on this creek could be detrimental to the community's water supply. And as I own the water rights on my property, I find this particularly concerning. In conclusion, because the application conflicts with Bonner County Code, fails to provide required submittals, and does not demonstrate how hazards will be avoided, or that project aligns with the comprehensive plan as required, approval will be premature and contrary to code. I respectfully urge you to deny the application or at minimum, continue the hearing and require full compliance with these code sections before any further consideration. This proposal represents a permanent change to our landscape and quality of life. The rights of existing residents must take precedence over the commercial interests of one operator. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Stand at the mic and make sure you state your name for the record, please.
Yeah, my name, my name's Simon Stobart and I live on Curtis Creek. And the site and surrounding land is zoned AG Forest, as we know. And per the site plan, project summary, and the staff report, it is also zoned as Rural Five. And Rural Five zoning designates an area for low-density residential development. And the intent of that is to preserve rural character and living, where land is used for residential, agriculture, and small farming, which is how the surrounding land is being used today. A 40-acre gravel pit mining operation is a heavily commercial operation that doesn't fit with the surroundings or the zoning. We are concerned about the noise and dust from such an operation, as well as the noise and dust from the additional 100 to 250 trucks per week traveling the partially paved and partially poorly maintained gravel road that is Curtis Creek Road. The economic development policy of the comprehensive plan states that businesses should minimize adverse effects, adverse impacts to the neighbors, neighborhood based on factors including but not limited to hours of operation and traffic volume generated by the business. Those 100 to 250 trucks must get to the site and leave the site, which means the trucks will traverse the road 200 to 500 times per day, or per week, sorry. Our Spirit Lake Cut Off Road and Curtis Creek Road really built and designed to handle up to 1,000 additional commercial gravel trucks a month. We are concerned with the impacts on Curtis Creek from dust runoff and erosion from the site as the natural foliage is removed and the topography is altered. Curtis Creek runs below the site and eventually goes subterranean and feeds into an aquifer. There is also concern about increased flooding as the fields below the site already flood every year. If dust and runoff is not properly controlled, then it can lead to contamination of the creek and aquifer, as well as increased flooding of the fields and maybe Curtis Creek itself. I did wonder why the staff report indicated that Department or Idaho Department of Fish and Game did not respond with a comment, but I did see in the lengthy email at the end, they did reply with a lengthy letter about their concerns for the creek and the wildlife habitat. And as I think's been mentioned, you know, there was a number of other things that should have been required to accompany the conditional use permit. Will such things as the reclamation plan and the grading and stormwater management plan be made available to the public? And also is there an EPA review related to this proposal? And considering the applicant has already blasted and removed rock from the property earlier this year, who and what will remedy residents' concerns if any of the approval conditions for this conditional use permit are not adhered to? And allowing this conditional use permit will greatly decrease the quality of life for rural residents who live on Curtis Creek Road and Hoodoo Mountain Road. It will decrease property values and will make traveling on the road, whether we're driving, walking, bike riding, horse riding, et cetera, extremely dangerous. In closing, I strongly urge you to do not approve this conditional use permit as it will ruin the rural beauty and tranquility of our community.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is it okay if I use this one?
Sure. You guys, do you mind? Yeah, that's fine. Make sure you state your name for the record.
Thank you, I will, I am nervous. My name is Paula Stobart and I reside on Curtis Creek Road also. And this is my opinion. One of the things from the conditional use permit, on the narrative statement, it says to explain elements such as noise and vibrations. It is stated that there's minimal noise. Sorry, I forgot my phone. So regarding about the minimal noise, it's noisy. I currently live about a quarter mile from the existing pit, I guess, if that's what we're calling it. And you can clearly hear, and I have it on my phone, I recorded it just this morning. And I know it's going to be hard, I have a really cheap, super old phone. I know you're not going to be able to hear it, I'm sorry if you'd like to. Anyway, the point is, you can clearly hear the crusher. And it pretty much goes on several days a week, for the most part, all day. It's very noisy and you can, it's kind of a feel, maybe we're hearing it because we kind of feel it, you can feel the vibration. And I'm a quarter of a mile away. So we can hear and feel the vibrations from the crusher at the current pit. It has also been stated that the new proposed site will need bigger, batter, more powerful equipment because the density of the rock. So if this grinder, crusher, I don't know what the technical term is, if we can hear that one, I'm pretty sure we're going to hear the bigger batter one too. When the, so there's already been blasting up there, I don't know if it had a permit to do it, but it was done. So the owner blasted and hauled rock in the spring. That blast, which of course we had no idea was going to occur, it shook the house so hard, it scared us. And I am really glad that my grandchildren weren't riding their pony when that went off because, you know, it was there. And that's that. So the trucks that were coming down from the pit at that time, they were flying. And when they went from the gravel to the pavement, it felt like a freight train dropped. And so I'm just concerned that if they were flying down Curtis Creek that fast, that's in front of my house. And again, the, there's, you had mentioned that there was, it's the same amount of traffic from the old pit to the new pit, but that's not correct. It might be the same amount of trucks, but it's not the same amount of trucks that are driving on Curtis Creek Road all day long. They would go from the old pit to Spirit Lake Cut Off Road, which is nothing like Curtis Creek. Curtis Creek is a very small farming rural little road. It is not the size of Spirit Lake Cut Off, which in that regard still isn't even very So to say there's no noise, that the noise is minimal, is incorrect too, because not only is it the noise that you can hear from the crusher, the trucks, the dust they create, the noise from the compression brakes, that's noise. And if you live there and you're listening to 500 go-bys a week, it's really, really annoying. So in closing, I'm going to say that, I'm pointing out that the impact to the residents is far greater than it was, what is proposed, and I hope that you do not approve this CUP. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Oh, please state your name for the record.
My name is Marcy Savage. I live next door to the existing rock pit. I have no faith that the new proposed rock pit won't be even louder, even dustier. I have put up with 20 years of dust, loud dump trucks. I can sit on my porch and count the seconds between trucks. They have the crusher running non-stop. The dust covers not just the road, it covers the entire property. You can't breathe sometimes. You can go outside to do yard work and end up with dirt in your teeth, that's how thick the dirt is. I've taken videos of it, it's in the air, over your head. It covers the two properties next to us. The trucks going past my house are constant. You cannot sit on the porch and have a conversation. You have to yell over the trucks every couple of minutes. I'm just proposing that with the history of the pit that's small, and they're saying there's not going to be noise or dust, that's laughable. Because the pit that's there is tiny compared to the one they're proposing, and the pit that's there is nothing but noise and dust, constantly. It echoes. They hear, you hear a loud beeping every time somebody backs up in there because now the pit is so big that it echoes. There's no peace, there's dust constantly. The only time they really do anything to the road, we have to constantly call and complain. They'll water it and on a hot summer day, an hour later, the dust is right back. So to say that this big, huge 40-acre pit isn't going to impact the community is false, completely false. Because the pit that they already have has already compacted the community, the people that live there. There's only certain things you can do. I've rearranged my house, I still have the glasses chattering, I get stuff rattling in the house, and that's just from the trucks going by. There's belly dumps, there's lowboys, there's equipment coming in and out, there's the crusher. Then they stack a big pile of crushed rock right at the end of my property. And then the trucks come in constantly going and getting that, and in and out, in and out. There's also during that time, there's rocks all over the roadway, so can't tell me that there's no rocks in the roadway. There's been three motorcycle deaths going around that corner, they hit the gravel, there you go. So the new pit, just to say that you're only going to blast once a year, but how much are you going to be crushing? Because that's the noisy thing that vibrates us constantly. I just would like it on record that I disapprove. And I hope you don't pass this because it will devalue everybody's property in the surrounding area. And you can say you might be a quarter mile away, well, you better hope you're more like five miles away because the dust, the noise, and the constant traffic are utterly out of this world.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Jamie Davis, I'm a resident and landowner in the area. My property is located on the opposing slope of the blasting zone for this conditional use permit application and reference. I appear today in opposition to the proposed conditional use permit. I speak requesting special considerations to be taken bearing on the water quality, aquifer integrity, and the risks posed by locating a blasting site within a few hundred yards of my property line, as well as several others. So this, in number 15 in the conditional use permit application, it asks to describe the, in complete detail, the scope and/or process. And the response states that natural rock from the project site will be drilled And the response states that natural rock from the project site will be drilled, blasted, crushed, and ran through a sieve to reduce various sizes of aggregate. I would like to point out that yes, the boundary line adjustment was done, and the northern boundary is 519 feet from my southern boundary. So this is well within distances at which blasting, shock, vibration, fracturing, and rock breakage could propagate into adjacent rock masses and subsurface fracture networks. The hazard is exacerbated by the fact that this blasting is planned laterally into the mountainside rather than down. So this is oriented towards the slope from which I draw my water, and I enjoy recreation with my children, my friends, and my pets. I request for an assessment, a risk assessment to the shallow wells and aquifer connectivity from blasting-induced fracturing and permeability changes. Blasting is effectively applying a mechanical impulse to rock, it creates stress waves and microfractures. In fracture rock aquifer systems, such impulses can alter hydraulic connectivity, open and close fracture pathways, and disturb fine sediments, all of which can degrade well function, change water yield, and allow ingress of contaminants. I understand that most regulatory and industrial guidelines for blasting, buffer zones are based on preventing damage to structure and human safety, but I want to have assurance that every account is considered for the hydrologic and geological effects at these proximities. And given that I draw my drinking water from a hand-dug shallow well, I am particularly vulnerable. Even modest shifts in connectivity, fine sediment mobilization, and induced microfracture could degrade yield and introduce contaminants from nearby zones. And yeah, just to further situate that concern for the potential of contamination by the blasting-derived chemicals, blasting often uses nitrates or nitrate fuel oil and other explosive formulations, so the detonators, primers, and accessory chemicals are in concern. So they may leave residual nitrates, ammonium, or other breakdown products, which if they infiltrate through fractures or disturbed pathways can alternate, or can alter groundwater And furthermore, in the conditional use permit, the, there's a section under narrative statements, and it's asking how is the proposed use compatible with adjoining land uses? The applicant claims that the proposed use is compatible with other surrounding gravel pits in the area, including historical land uses on surrounding properties. I respectfully challenge this statement as potentially inaccurate and misleading. While there may be other gravel pits in the general vicinity, the applicant's current gravel pit is not adjacent to the subject parcel, nor does it share a property boundary. It should not be used to claim compatibility with adjoining land uses, which must be assessed based on immediate neighbors, not the distant or unrelated operations. In reality, the adjoining properties are overwhelmingly residential in use and agriculture or forestry in zoning. Historically and currently, these lands have been used for rural homesteading, forestry, recreation, and small-scale agriculture, not industrial mining. Introducing a high-impact activity such as blasting rock and crushing represents a stark and incompatible shift in the land use. According to the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan, this land use component was updated April 22nd, 2025. The stated purpose is to protect, preserve, and maintain areas that are rural in character and the integrity of forests, woodland areas, and to avoid fragmentation of forests and farms. The plan goes on to state that these areas are intended for agriculture and cultural and forestry pursuits, including livestock production, horticulture, floriculture, viticulture, and excess dilute uses for treating and storing, processing agricultural products. Do I need to stop? Am I at three minutes?
No, no one's been running the timer for me, so I'm not worrying about it.
Well, if somebody would like to yield more time, I can just, I just have a few more things to say. Okay, thank you. There is no mention of industrial-scale mining or 38 acres of blasting as compatible use within this designation. The proposed operation, blasting dozens of acres of mountainside and operating crushing equipment, directly conflicts with the intent and the protections outlined in the Comprehensive Plan. It risks not only fragmentation of the surrounding forest and agriculture lands, but also degradation of residential quality of life and long-term rural viability. I'd like to conclude with a few prompts for the committee, that the agitation and impacts from blasting may propagate in unexpected directions. Once fractures are induced, altered, or contaminant pathways opened, remediation or reversal is exceedingly difficult and expensive, if possible at all. What guarantees can be made against the fact that the orientation of this operation invites the possibility of fracturing or destabilizing rock towards the side of the hill that I live on? How does this consider future generations? Given that my drinking water is at stake, and the blasting is extremely close, denial or substantial mitigation, including expansion of buffer zones, independent oversight, and insured liability, is a reasonable demand from my part. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else?
My name is Jill Neal.
Everyone's going to have a turn.
Okay. And I wasn't actually planning on speaking, but I agree with everything that everybody said, we, and especially to you, because I know you were nervous and you were shaken, and it came from the heart, we all feel your pain. So anyway, the only thing I want to say is that our property is directly affected because we are on, it would be their, it's their western border and our east, so we are completely directly affected. And we have a lot of livestock, and I know a lot of us do, and we are very concerned about that. We have a lot of cows, and horses, and donkeys, and things like that, and they don't do well with loud noises. And so we all moved up to where we are because we wanted to be out in a rural area and be homesteaders, and we wanted, I mean, that was why we moved there. And we aren't there to be by a gravel pit, and I know, and it's big, and I know all of us here are directly affected by that, and so I would just like you to, in your heart, to put yourself in our place, that you moved to a place where it was your dream, and we're all just there living the dream, and then this is going to get dumped in the middle of us, and it's going to disrupt all of our lives and all of our livelihoods, and we're all planning on being there for not only our kids, but our grandkids, and you are putting them in a lot of jeopardy. So I'd really like you to take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, go ahead.
My name is Shane Warner. I live the adjacent property to the east, one that borders it. In the, in the conditional use permit application, under the project description, it states that the owner would like to start a gravel pit on this property. I'd like to note that definition of a gravel pit is extracting naturally occurring loose aggregate, like sand and gravel. This definition does not match the description of the material the applicant states is on his property. The application states, "The property is prime for this type of use due to the high-quality granite on-site." The material on the property is not high-quality granite, is what is known as a belt supergroup. It would appear the applicant wants to have an open-pit rock-crushing operation, which involves way more drilling, blasting, and extensive crushing. That's not a gravel pit. In the conditional use permit application, under the narrative statement section, first question, "How will the conditional use be designed to avoid creating hazards or dangers to persons on or adjacent to the property?" The applicant stated, "The boundary line adjustment was done prior to limit the conditional use to one property, therefore not giving use to going across property lines." In my opinion, that adjustment of the property lines created a very major hazard directly at the very end of my driveway. That's where they put it. Their new proposed road, every one of them is right at the very end of my driveway. It's a safety hazard, complete safety hazard, that they just were not thinking about. I'd like to note, in the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan, August 27th, 2025, under property rights, I'd like to note, under goals and objectives, number one, it states property rights, protect property rights, and enhance property values through conscious land use planning. Number three states, impacts on other properties should be taken into account when considering land use proposals, policies, and codes. Under policy number three, in all land use decisions, consider the property rights of the applicant, adjoining, and nearby landowners for future generations, as well as short-term and long-term consequences of the decisions. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's David Davis, thank you for being here. I'm a resident in Bonner County. My property is on the adjacent slope. I'm speaking today to strongly oppose the conditional use permit application for the open-pit mining operation that will require drilling, blasting, and large rock crushers on land-zoned AF-10, surrounded primarily by residential homesteads. The proposal is not compatible with the zoning, the surrounding land uses, or the values expressed in the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan. AF-10 zoning is intended to support agricultural, agriculture, forestry, and low-density rural living, not industrial-scale mining. The Bonner County Comprehensive Plan emphasizes protecting rural character, maintaining quiet residential areas, and ensuring that land use decisions preserve the quality of life for existing residents. Approving this permit would violate both the letter and the spirit of the plan, undermining the expectations of those who chose to live and invest in the area under the protection of AF-10 zoning. Allowing an open-pit mining in this area sets a dangerous precedent, undermining the zoning framework and allowing industrial creep into a quiet residential area. Drilling and blasting, drilling, blasting, and rock crushing will generate constant intrusive noise that cannot be contained on-site. The noise will shatter the peace of nearby homes, disrupt livestock, and negatively affect the mental and physical health of nearby residents. In addition, the operation will release large amounts of dust, including fine particulate matter that poses a serious health risk. Dust control measures are notoriously difficult to enforce and rarely eliminate off-site impacts. The application states that water will not be required for the project, yet dust suppression is legally and practically required for any rock-crushing operation to function responsibly. Water is the most common and effective method to control fugitive dust during crushing and hauling. If the applicant is not planning to use water, then they are either misrepresenting the scope of operations, or plan to operate without adequate dust control, or will later request access to groundwater or surface water potentially affecting nearby wells and water rights. In all scenarios, this is a red flag, either a poor planning or lack of transparency. The commission and the public deserve a clear and honest assessment of the project's true environmental impacts and infrastructure needs. Many residents in the area rely on private wells. Mining operations involving blasting and excavation can alter groundwater flow, damage aquifers, and increase the risk of contamination from surface runoff and fuel or chemical spills. Even a slight shift in water availability or quality would have serious consequences for nearby households, consequences that cannot simply be mitigated after the fact. Residents in the area rely on private wells, blasting and excavation can fracture aquifers, disrupt natural recharge, and risk contamination through surface runoff or chemical spills. Once groundwater is affected, it's difficult and expensive, if not impossible, to fix. This type of industrial operation is fundamentally at odds with the rural lifestyle that defines Bonner County. Residents do not move here to live next to a blasting quarry. Introducing heavy industry into this area erodes the rural charm and peaceful character we're trying to preserve. This operation will significantly increase heavy truck traffic on rural roads that were never designed to handle this kind of industrial load. These roads serve residential neighborhoods, school bus routes, and agricultural properties, not mining operations. The additional traffic poses multiple concerns, safety risks to local drivers, children waiting for the school bus, pedestrians, noise and vibration from truck passing throughout the day, and damage to the county infrastructure, including rutting, shoulder collapse, and accelerated road degradation. Who will bear the cost of repairing this damage? Likely the taxpayers, not the mining operator. Bonner County cannot afford to let industrial development destroy roads built for rural use. In closing, approving this conditional use permit would set a dangerous precedent, allowing high-impact industrial use in an area that was never meant to host it. It would disregard existing zoning, contradict the county's comprehensive plan, and threaten health and safety, damage wildlife habitat, and diminish the rural quality of life that makes Bonner County special. I respectfully urge you to protect the integrity of our zoning and values of our community by denying this permit. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Stephanie Warner, and I live on Curtis Creek, the only adjoining property to the proposed property. I had a whole thing written out, and then I listened to this gentleman talk about what they're going to change and things. My biggest focus is my family, and with our easement onto our property, it is in the lower corner, exactly where the entrance to this pit is going to be. I have young drivers, and my husband, and my mother, and I also have a lot of animals. And the noise and the shaking from all of the trucks, I've lived here for 10 years, next to the other pit, just on the other side of the road, and there's been days that I've been outside, and it was constant. And I garden, I, you know, I'm raising my family, and there's been evenings where I've had a headache, and just felt really awful because of the noise that happens all day long from the crushing and the trucks that drive by and the dust. But most importantly, it is the safety of my family. With his new proposed roads or driveway, the one, long one, is along the whole line of my southern portion of my parcel, and then the entrance would be right there again at my easement. The vertical one was, I know that that was talked about a few years ago, that he was planning on putting in a road, and so still, that, that road or driveway, whatever you want to call it, will intersect the bottom of my easement where I access my property to get to my house. And once again, I have young children, we walk, we have animals, young drivers. I just, the safety of my family is first and foremost. Along with the water quality, we are concerned, we do use the watered water, all of our animals, and if that were to become contaminated or changed in any way, that's really putting my family in jeopardy because we raise our own food, and that would probably change the health of our animals. Thank you.
Thank you for having us. I'm Deborah Lloyd, and I have lived on the Larson Trust property for at least 11 years, and I've never met Darren. Hi, Dan. I have an RV that is, I don't know, how close is it to the bridge? It's so close, I'm sure he didn't even know I was there, but the trucks going, they shake the ground. And now with the proposed, all this new stuff going on, I just can't imagine it, how awful it's going to be, and I am the manager of four properties that our family trust owns in North Idaho. And Stephanie is my daughter, so I am up and down that little easement road. I can't even tell you how many times a day, back and forth, back and forth. And when our family trust purchased that property, the excitement about it, and Ollie, my little 11-year-old grandson, I mean, we were so excited about going up and down that easement to go to the mailbox on the side-by-side. I mean, what a great life. I talked to my other, their other daughter, their daughter, Ella, she kind of talked about her boarding horses on that property. There's no- There's no way that that can be done. It's just a huge hindrance, and I hope my numbers are correct, but I was informed that the amount of truck traffic per week, the upper amount was 250, and 30 of private vehicles that would be coming to the pit. If that's five days a week, that's 56 trucks of private or commercial that are going to that pit using the same easement that we use. That's 112 passes with the 56 vehicles. The truck comes in and the truck goes out. It ends up being 112 divided by the eight hours, that's 14 passes per hour. And I just, I can't even fathom that. How could you have, so essentially seven trucks, they're going in and they're coming out. So that roadway, that driveway is being driven by 14 times an hour? Unless my math is wrong. If it does, I'm sorry, but that's my understanding of the situation, and if our family had known about this proposed, I knew that there was something proposed prior, and that it wasn't going to work out for whatever reason, we never would have invested in that property. And it would be a shame that our livelihood, our lifestyle is going to be impacted to the point that, well, I just can't tell you how I feel about that. And all my, I have 10 grandchildren who live in, within a mile of that property, one mile. Horseback riders, young drivers, young neighbors driving in and out of our property, that this just can't happen. And if there was another way around it, and maybe they could go to the second driveway, right past Dan's place, I don't think he would appreciate that, and I don't think he wants his young drivers being involved with 14 passes by trucks every hour, every hour. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, then I'm going to give the applicant an opportunity to rebut or address some of these comments.
Travis Haller, again, 7B Engineering. A conditional use permit is allowed when a use is proposed on a property with the current zoning, and with the use tables in Bonner County Code, we take a look at that when a private property owner wants to do a use. And in this particular case, the gravel pit, or if we want to call it a quarry, or whatever have you, is conditionally allowed. So I bring that up because that is what the code calls for, is it's conditionally allowed. What conditions do we put in place so that that use, that specific use at the public hearing, meets all the county code? So everything that has been brought up, dust, water, road access, all that stuff, what conditions do we need to put in place to, in order for the use, the private property owner, to use, to do that use? And that's, that's really what it is. So by denying a conditional use permit is actually going against the code. Jackie, Hearing Examiner, Ruckus. Alex, it's, can I have a question, a recess? There's a lot just to go over. Is that okay?
Oh, yes, I was actually going to ask for one.
Perfect, thank you.
I should have asked before I had you come up, sorry about that. Yeah, let's take 10 minutes, let's take a 10-minute recess, everyone. Come back in 10 minutes. So it is, what is that? Pardon me, 2:15? Okay, so let's meet back at 3:09?
We are back and we're going to continue allowing the applicant to address the comments that were presented. I don't know, do I need to say the file name again and all that? No. All you, bud.
Perfect. Thank you. Hearing Examiner, there's a lot to digest here and I appreciate the recess. Thank you. So as stated before, a conditional use permit is conditionally allowed. What conditions do we need to put in place? There's a lot of pertinent things brought up and there are two main things that I go to. They are that the conditions that have been put in place to address road access, dust, water quality, water availability are in, are being proposed, are in there, conditions of approval. In addition to that, the professionals that regulate air, dust, water quality, those are the ones that have been notified of what is going on. So that if there is a water quality issue, a water availability issue, there's dust, the public has somebody to call that jurisdiction to come out and say, hey, what's going on? There's a lot of overseeing jurisdictions with a gravel pit like this. The big one being IDL. There's a reclamation plan that is required. There's a bond that goes with that reclamation plan. That's a condition of approval. So we look towards the professionals to tell us what our concerns should be, but also they work for us. And so those are the agencies that we should be looking to. I appreciate that all these concerns are brought up, but we have DEQ that is going to break, regulate us, the stormwater management plan. That is a condition of approval. And it really comes down to how you look at this. We're seeing a lot of the negatives, whereas what is a gravel pit for, right? It's to provide gravel that is needed, just like timber is needed, just like mining, underground mining. We need those resources. Question is, how do we do it in a way that doesn't affect the environment as much as possible? But we need those resources. And so it really depends on how you look at it. If it's okay with Hearing Examiner, I'll leave to bring up another representative of 7B Engineering to just explain a little bit further on the history and stuff?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, thank you.
More information, the better. I mean, you should just make sure you state your name for the record.
My name is Dan Larson, 7B Engineering. Wearing several hats in this. I am the trustee of the Larson Trust surrounding property. I also live there, south of Joe, which I guess you left, but I know Shane and Stephanie. I don't know Sean, but he wears E.T., so I don't have to meet him. Anyone here other than Darren, remember the 90s out there? Nobody lived there, except us. In the 90s, everyone on Hoodoo Mountain and Curtis Creek, part of what was Darren's house at the time, now my parents' house, locked in the spring because you could not get up Hoodoo Mountain Road, you could not get down Bluebird Lane, you could not get up Curtis Creek Road past our property. One of the reasons I went to engineering school, because my grandpa, or grandfather, maintained Curtis Creek Road up to his driveway, so you could drive it. Beyond that, you could not drive it in the spring. And that was because we had a sand pit. We would fill those mud holes with sand and rock, so we could get up and down the road. And my father, better or worse, he hated it. Had quite a reputation going up Hoodoo Mountain Road, pulling out all the Subarus that were stuck in the mud holes up there. So it became very clear to me during high school that gravel and rock, road construction, was of imminent concern. The county also paved a cutoff road, Sparley Cut Off Road, in 1972. Around 1985, it fell apart. It put no base in it. And Shane understands this. There was no base in the road. It got so bad you couldn't drive it in the spring either. And we would drive four-wheel drive truck, which we had a Ford Hi-Void at the time. We'd ride the ditch because the road itself was too rough to drive. So that is what I have seen. Partly why I took engineering was for this road construction. And I think the county said very well in their comments, they need the gravel. You need a central gravel location in order to get this stuff moved in as short a distance as possible from source to the need. I guarantee you, everyone who's driving on gravel from Curtis Creek's hand, they're.
Thank you.
Are we allowed to ask questions?
Sorry.
So I do want to address everything that was brought up. So it's going to be fairly pinpoint. So and if for some reason I leave something out, I apologize. Grab me afterwards. So wetlands, as we all know, we look at the wetlands mapper. If there's wetlands on the property, that's what we use. No one's going to pay for a wetland delineation just for the heck of it. So according to the wetlands map, there are no wetlands on the site. There was talk about the compatibility with the comp plan. Yes, private property rights are in there, but just like every one of us that is zone AF10, you have the right to also apply for a gravel pit permit. Also in the comp plan, there is a section called Economic Development, which talks about the county enticing, trying to encourage economic development where feasible and is allowed in code. Water use, I'm sorry if that was not stated clearly. There is no water being brought to site in the sense of the use needing water for the operation, like a house, or like a laundromat, or something like that. Yes, water is going to be used on the property, cleaning the equipment and dust abatement, but not to the scale that we actually are drilling a well of that sense. There is compatibility of the adjoining land uses. The compatibility of the adjoining land uses is always a difficult one because normally when these conditional uses come up, or a zone change or something, it's how, it's not that it's compatible with the residence. Residents are allowed in the AF zone. So are agricultural and resource pursuits. That's in the comp plan and that's also said in the zone district that we are in. So the compatibility is there in the code? Yes, the adjoining gravel pit isn't there, but this use is compatible with the zoning that we are, the use that we're proposing. I, the noise, yeah, crushers are loud. I get it. If Hearing Examiner so chooses, we're all for anything you want to put in place to minimize the effect of noise. However, gravel pits are conditionally allowed in this zone and they wouldn't have been conditionally allowed in this zone if noise was a big problem. The reason gravel pits are allowed in AF zone and not in a rural residential R5 is because of the size, because of the, and we have 38 acres. Reasonable demands, absolutely. I think that's why we're here. What reasonable demands need to be put in place? And really that comes into the conditions of approval that have, that will be set upon us, as well as the professionals, those overseeing regulatory agencies. Some provided comments, some didn't. But we're going to have to adhere to all those private property rights. Mr. Hegi has just as much right to apply for a gravel pit as anybody else. The zoning allows for this. There was some talk that zoning may or may not align. The zoning does allow for this. And then the roadway and the access. I think we're, I think we're meaningful in what we're trying to do. And I think the Warners who got up and spoke, the only ones with the actual adjoining property line to the use, according to my information, purchased the property a few months ago. So I think there's something to be said for that, but we want to work with them. We want to work with them on that access because I completely agree. I have two kids. Thank God they're not driving age yet, but I agree that if they're driving by that property, let's try to see if we can work something out with a new easement or whatnot. So, and again, that new easement is still a condition of approval. So I think that's everything. Do you have any questions for me?
I don't. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Alrighty, so I'm going to close this hearing at this time to this, to public testimony on this file, and this file CUP 005, oops, 0005-25. And as I've said before, I am going to be taking my five business days to go over this because there is a lot of information that I need to go through, especially all of the public comment. Brought up a lot of good things, so I want to make sure I address all of that. All right, so we are going to move on to file number CUP 0003-25, A Conditional Use Permit for a Private Community Facility. And I just want to tell all you guys, thank you very much for all your information. It really does help to have all of that input from different aspects for me.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry. Now we will go to CUP 0003-25, Conditional Use Permit, Private Community Facility. The applicants are requesting a conditional use permit for the creation of a private community facility. The 60-acre property is owned Ag Forest Hen. Property is located off Lake House Lane in Section 3 Township 59 North, Range 1 West Boise Meridian, the private north side. Fire District, the Board of County Commissioners at the July 21st, 2025 hearing remanded the file to the Hearing Examiner for further evaluation. It's all yours, Dave. I have no conflict of interest with this file.
No, it's Cassie.
I think it went that fast.
Give me a second, find it here.
Yeah, that works. It'll take a sec. My thumb actually was going numb from writing. I must have been squeezing really hard. My gosh. Yes, come up front now.
All right.
Okay.
Hey, Fisher, Bonner County Planning, again. Conditional Use Permit, CUP 325 for a Private Community Facility. Lookable standards. And the applicants are requesting a conditional use permit for the creation of a private community facility. 60-acre property is owned Ag Forest G10, project located off Lake House Lane via Highway 95 in Section 3 Township 59 North, Range 1 West. And site plan. Up close, site plan of the use area, showing the temporary porta potties and the future restrooms, which are not part of this application. Background on this site, it's unplatted, approximately 60 acres, zoned AF10, land use is Ag Forest land 10 to 20, and access again is Lake House Lane, privately owned and maintained easement driveway via Highway 95. Environmental features and services, the site contains map slopes, the site does contain map wetlands, and the site does contain frontage on a lake or a pond. Parcels within special flood hazard areas, Zone A and Zone X. Services include water provided by individual well with a 2,500 gallon reserve tank, and sewage is provided by individual septic for the parcel. The facility and a proposed use is to be served by porta potties. It's within the north side fire district and served by Northern Lights, and falls within the Lake Pondery School District Number 84. BCRC 12-223, Hearing Examiner shall review the particular facts and circumstances of each proposal. To grant a conditional use permit, the Hearing Examiner must find that the proposal is not in conflict with policies of the comprehensive plan as found in the adopted implementation component, and that the proposed use will neither create a hazard nor be dangerous to persons on or adjacent to the property. History on this application, it was received January 29th, 2025, considered complete on March 3rd, 2020, 25, oh, sorry, 2025. At the May 7th, 2025 hearing, Hearing Examiner approved the conditional use permit. Typo there, CUP 325 with conditions. Hearing Examiner issued written decision on May 12th, 2025. I give up. On May 28th, 2025, the applicant submitted timely appeal challenging conditions B2 and B3 of the decision. Condition B2, State Panhandle Health has indicated that the existing septic may have no additional flows added without an expansion permit of the proposed facility's own separate drain field. The applicant shall provide a copy of, of an approved septic permit from Panhandle Health District. Condition B3 stated, the applicant shall meet with the Idaho Department of Environmental Quality, Coeur d'Alene, to create a transient non-community public water system for the Idaho Rules for Public Drinking Water Systems. And the applicants contend that these conditions are not supported by substantial evidence in the record as a whole. The appeal is filed within the 28-day appeal period and was accompanied by the required fee. All procedural requirements for filing the appeal have been satisfied. At the July 21st, 2025 hearing, the Bonner County Board of Commissioners, Board of Commissioners remanded the file back to the Hearing Examiner for further review. BCRC 12331, Interpretation of Use Tables. In the case of a question as to the inclusion or exclusion of a particular proposed use in a particular use category, the planning director shall have the authority to make final determination based on the characteristics of the operation of the proposed use and the planning director's interpretation of the standard land use coding manuals as provided in Section 12339 of the subchapter. In the case of a conflict between the general description and the use table, the table shall prevail. Staff response, Bonner County Revised Code does not have an explicit use entitled Event Venues. The planning director is required to make a determination based on the direction of Bonner County Revised Code 12331 and 12339. BCRC 12339, Classification of New Uses Within Zone Districts, is recognized that new and anticipated types of land use, uses will be proposed in Bonner County. In order to provide for such changes and contingencies, when a use is proposed that is not listed as a prohibited, permitted, or conditional use in a zone district, the planning director shall make a determination that A, the use falls within the same standard classification pursuant to the Standard Industrial Classification Manual, or the North American Industry Classification System as amended, modified, or superseded, as a listed permitted or conditional use in a current zone district, and that it may be processed in the same fashion as the listed use. Or B, the use does not fall within the same standard classification pursuant to the Standard Industrial Classification Manual, or the North American Industry Classification System as amended, modified, or superseded, as a listed permitted or conditional use in a particular zone district, and thus is a prohibited use in that district. Or C, the use is unique in nature and an amendment to this title is necessary in order to allow for its placement within the appropriate zone district. Currently, Bonner County Revised Code does not have a specific use for event venues. Historically, Bonner County has permitted these types of uses as private community facilities. Bonner County has used the Standard Industrial Classification Manual supplied by OSHA and the North American Industry Classification System supplied by the U.S. Census to determine the use that an event venue would fall under. Neither source has a specific use entitled event venues. The use of renting the land and structures is described under NAICS Section 531120, licers of non-residential buildings, and SIC Section 6512, operators of non-residential buildings. NAICS cross-references these rentals with the purposes of promoting various events and indexes various types of halls. The Bonner County Revised Code has a listed use titled churches, grange halls, public or private community facilities, but does not define these. According to Bonner County Revised Code 12800A6, terms not defined within Title 11, this code or this title shall have the meaning customarily assigned to them as defined in Webster's Dictionary, Merriam-Webster's Collegiate Dictionary 11th Edition. According to Merriam-Webster's Collegiate Dictionary 11th Edition, the definition of hall includes large, usually imposing building for public or semi-public purposes, a large room for assembly or auditorium, and a place used for public entertainment. The definition of facility includes something such as hospital that is built, installed, or established to serve a particular purpose. The definition of community includes a unified body of individuals such as people with common interests living in a particular area, or broadly the area itself, a group of people with a common characteristic or interest living together within a larger society, a body of persons of common and especially professional interests scattered through a larger society, a body of persons or nations having a common history, a common social, economic, and political interests, a group linked by a common policy, an interacting population of various kinds of individuals, in a common location, a state or commonwealth, a social state or condition, joint ownership or participation, common character or likeness, social activity, fellowship, and society at large. Per BCRC 12339, the planning director shall make a determination of whether or not the proposed use falls within the same standard classification. Planning Director has determined that event venue meets the definition of a private community facility and grange hall, which are both listed in the public use table, BCRC 12335, specifically line 2 of the community definition, line 6 of the hall definition, and line 4B of the facility definition. Show the intention of the private community facility. This definition can be summarized as something that is built, installed, or established to serve a private social activity. Since 2016, the Bonner County Planning Department has had over 10 applications for new conditional use permits or to make modifications to existing permits for event venues on different properties, all of which have been evaluated under private community facility use. This use was first interpreted under previous planning director Milton Olerton, and current planning director Jake Gable has upheld this interpretation. This was written prior to.
Yeah.
BCRC 12335, The Public Use Table shows that grange halls and public or private community facilities are conditionally permitted in the AF zone per Note 3. Note 3, where access to the site is by road, the road shall be located within a recorded easement or public right-of-way and constructed to the appropriate standards set forth in Title 2 of this code or Appendix A of this title, except where subject to the terms of an approved special use permit issued by a state or federal agency. Access to this site is off of Lake House Lane via Highway 95. Lake House Lane is considered a shared driveway. Recently named per Bonner County GIS requirements, Highway 95 meets developmental standards, and the Idaho Transportation Department commented that the parcel has a conditional use permit for access to State Highway 95, Permit Number 1-25199A. Your Standards Review, BCRC 12421, Performance Standards for All Uses. The applicant stated that each event will have some noise from the attendees. However, the nearest neighbor is 800 feet away and is a logging company. The nearest non-family residence from an adjoining lot is over a mile away. No light, odor, fumes, or vibrations will even be felt that far. Staff response, the requested use will result in additional noise, although the location is remote with adjoining parcels consisting of fishing game property, a logging warehouse, shop, and other properties owned by the applicant. The use is unlikely to result in fire hazards, radioactivity, or electrical disturbance, vibration, air pollution, or water pollution. BCRC 124.3, Parking Standards. Table 4.3, Minimum Off-Street Table 4.3, Minimum Off-Street Parking Requirements for Community Halls is one space per 100 gross square feet of floor area and within 500 feet of the principal use. BCRC 12432 requires one space per hundred square feet of floor area. The proposed pavilion is 2,400 square feet. Based on the square footage, the applicant is required to have a minimum of 24 parking spaces within 500 feet of the use. The submitted site plan shows one-half acre parking within 500 feet of the principal use. BCRC 12431F calculates gross area at 250 square feet per parking space, which includes driveways and aisles. One-half acre would provide 87 parking spaces. 124.4, Sign Standards. Per the application, a proposed sign will be located near the highway on a separate and distinct property and not the subject property. The application does not contain any deviation requests to allow the proposed sign to be located on the neighboring property. Bonner County Revised Code 12441D, Off-Premises Signs Are Not Permitted. There's a condition of approval on that. BCRC 124.5, Design Standards. The project falls within the exemption of 12453A3 for sidewalks and walkways where the project is at the end of the road or pedestrian connections beyond the road are not possible or desirable. Parking is not proposed within the lot frontage. Proposed structures will be evaluated at the time of building location permits, and the applicant will provide garbage receptacles and transport to area transfer sites after each event. 12452, Site and Building Plans. The proposed structures will require building location permits to be submitted to the planning department. The current proposal is using porta-potties which do not require permitting. There's a condition of approval on that. 453F, Lighting Standards. Lighting shall be directed downward to the intended area to be lighted. All exterior lighting fixtures shall incorporate cutoff shields to prevent spill over into residential areas. Broadcast lighting fixtures that project lighting outward rather than downward are discouraged. Outdoor lighting shall be arranged so that the light is directed downward and away from adjoining properties. Temporary high-intensity construction light should be oriented so as to reduce or eliminate glare onto adjoining properties. Freestanding light fixtures shall be limited to 14 feet in height. Vehicular roadway and highway lighting shall be subject to county requirements. Mercury vapor light fixtures are prohibited. When using decorative miniature lighting strings, bulbs larger than 11 watts each shall not be used. Low wattage lighting medding diode devices and other lighting that reduces electrical use is encouraged, and backlit onings are prohibited. Staff response, the applicant has submitted a complete lighting plan. Proposed lighting is minimal and primarily within the pavilion areas. Standards listed were addressed in the plan. 124.6, Landscaping and Screening Standards. BCRC 12461, The standards in this subchapter shall apply to all new development in the commercial, industrial, and rural service center districts and all other commercial, multifamily, public, and industrial development in other districts unless otherwise noted. And it's not a remodel, I'm gonna skip that. For the purposes of BCRC 12460, or I'm sorry, the purpose of BCRC 12460 is to reduce the visual impacts of parking and storage areas on the street and adjacent properties, to enhance the character of commercial and multifamily areas, to provide visual screens and barriers as a transition between differing land uses, to promote the use of native and drought-tolerant species appropriate for the region, and to provide increased areas for permeable surfaces to allow for infiltration of surface water into groundwater resources, reduce the quantity of stormwater discharge, and improve the quality of stormwater discharge. The proposed area of use is blocked by a distance of over 1,000 feet and natural vegetation to Highway 95 and public view. Impervious surface is minimal, with much of the use being on open field and grasses. This proposal includes a natural buffer of trees which meet the landscaping types outlined in BCRC 12464 and the buffer requirements for parking areas in 12465, which requires a 25-foot buffer along streets. There's a condition of approval on that. 127.1, Shorelines. Following shoreline setbacks shall plan in all zoning districts. For lakes, sloughs, ponds, or other similar basins, setback is 40 feet. For rivers, streams, creeks, similar flowing bodies of water, not identified in subsection A1, 75 feet. Project does not contain front, or the project does contain frontage on an unnamed pond. The proposed structure and uses are over 700 feet from the map shoreline. As per the National Hydrology Data Set, no development is proposed within the shoreline setbacks, and that's included in the conditions of approval. 127.2, Grading, Storm Art Management, and Erosion Control. 12720.2 is the applicability. The provisions of this subchapter shall be applicable to B, Commercial and Industrial Site Development and Commercial or Industrial Planned Unit Developments, subject to the provisions of this title as amended, and building permits for commercial and industrial use is subject to provisions of Title 11 of this code, except as provided for in 12720.3K. And a grading storm art management and erosion control plan shall be required pursuant to 12720.2B at the time of building location permit. And 127.3, Wetlands. Wetland reconnaissance required. All building location permits, building permits, or conditional use permits proposed for sites containing map wetlands as determined from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service National Wetland Inventory Maps, the following developments are exempt from this requirement. Conditional use permit applications where the applicant can demonstrate on a site plan that the proposed building site is not within a wetland as determined from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service National Wetland Inventory Maps, or where the development will not create additional impervious surface. Staff response, the property does contain map wetlands within the proposed area of use. Based on the submitted site plan, the structure is located approximately 40 feet from the edge of wetlands. This proposal does not appear to be in conflict with the policies of the implementation component of the comprehensive plan, and the proposals discussed in detail relative to the individual policies in the staff report. Public agencies providing a comment include Idaho Department of Environmental Quality, Idaho Transportation Department, Northern Lights, Panhandle Health Department, Idaho Department of Water Resources, the Bonner County Historical Society, and the Idaho State Historical Society. Agencies replying with no comment included Idaho Department of Fish and Game, Kootenay-Pondry Sewer District, and TC Energy. Any questions?
No, thank you.
Sorry, this is rough.
Ah, you did good. Okay, would the applicant like to make a presentation?
Yes.
And just make sure you state your name for the record.
Richard Cook, applicant. So this is our third hearing on this. Reason being, we originally had a hearing decision with three conditions for approval. The one was the, it was the lighting diagram which we sent off, and that's been approved. The two was Panhandle Health Department wanted us to add, said that we need to add a extension to our leach field if we were to have a restroom. And then B3 was the Department of Environmental Quality based on us operating 365 days a Number one's been satisfied. Number two is not any longer a issue because we have removed our near-future plans for a restroom. They were always going to be in the future, but I think it was determined that we needed to do this even if they were planned for the future. So we have removed that from the near future. The third one was Department of Environmental Quality wanted us to install a public water system, and once we talked to them about what that entailed, and then we happened to tell them we actually aren't going to be operating 365 days a year, it's going to be much, much less than that. They were like, oh, well, if you're under 60 days a year, you don't even need to talk to us. So that one is moot as well. So we're, yeah, we're not building the bathroom. We realize that if we do build a bathroom in the future, we will have to amend our And so our request is that you come to the same conclusion without those three conditions. Also, there was recently a response from one of the agencies, I think it was the National Historic Society. They said they recommend a survey, but then also the Bonner County Historical Museum said there are no historical issues in that area, and so that kind of...
I think that was the Idaho State Historical Society wanted you to do a cultural resource on it.
They recommended one, yeah.
And we finally built the...
Yeah, so the truth is, we pulled, yeah, we pulled the VLP out of the CUP so that we could build it quicker. It's been approved and done, and so it's really kind of a moot point at this juncture. So I think that is all I have.
Cool.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just writing more notes. Well, again, I'm not going to repeat the rules of testimony, so is there anyone that has a written statement they'd like to enter into the record? Any supporting public testimony online? I don't see anyone here that can talk. Any supporting public testimony online? Any neutral public testimony online? Any opposing public testimony online? Okay, and there's no one here. No one in the audience who didn't sign up to speak, so I'm not going to rebut that. So you guys have nothing to rebut. Yay. Okay, so I'm going to close the hearing to public testimony on this file, and I will render my decision within the next five business days. Okay, so we are moving on to File V 0024-25, a variance waterfront setback. The applicant is requesting a zero-foot waterfront setback where 40 feet is required for the construction of a deck. The approximate six-acre property is Zoned Rural 5. The project site is located off Bottle Bay Road in Section 19, Township 57 North, Range 1 West, Boise, Meridian. Project site is within the service areas of Sagel Fire District and Lake Pondray School District, number 84, and I have no conflict of interest with this file. Here's Kyle.
Kyle Snyder, Bonner County Planning for the record. We'll be talking about waterfront setback for the Campbells, File V 0024-25. So again, that project summary, the applicant's requesting a zero-foot waterfront setback for the expansion of two existing decks. Property is located off Bottle Bay Road, which is a Bonner County-owned and maintained public right-of-way. Property is Zoned Rural 5 and is generally located in Section 19, Township 57 North, Range 1 West, Boise, Meridian. So on the left is the submitted site plan, which gives you just that aerial view of what they're looking to do, but the applicant, while it's not a application requirement, they submitted some CAD models, which I think give a very clear idea of what they're proposing. So on the top is what's currently existing. So that primary deck on the left is obviously very low, and then that deck on the right is, it's existing, but it's smaller than what's being proposed. So down below, you see that the deck on the left, they're proposing to raise a, even with kind of the door entryway, and then the expansion on that right side Some background on the site, the land use is residential. It is currently unplatted, and it is approximately 6.04 acres. Again, the zoning designation is Rural 5, and the comp plan designation is Rural Residential. Access is Bottle Bay Road, which is a Bonner County-owned and maintained public right-of-way. As you can see in the image to the right, the site does contain mapped slopes. Good majority of those slopes are over 30%. Site does not contain any mapped wetlands. It does contain waterfront to Don't Lake Pondray, and the site is within SFHA Zone AE and X. As far as your services, application listed individual well and individual septic. School district is Lake Pondray, school district number 84, and Sagel Fire District. There are your applicable standards for review for this application. A list of the agency's notice for the file can be found in the attached Appendix A of the staff report. Comments were submitted by DEQ and Panhandle Health District. Following agencies replied with no comment. That was IDWR, Idaho Department of Fish and Game, ITD, Bonner County Historical Society, and Kootenay-Pondry Sewer District. At the time the staff report was prepared, no public comments were received. Your first review described whether conditions apply to the property that do not apply generally to other properties in the same zone vicinity, which conditions are a result of lot size, shape, topography, or other circumstances over which the applicant has no control. The applicant response, lot has only a small fraction of usable building site, land adjacent to Lake Pondray. The rest of the land is, as it is, at an extreme slope, 45 degrees or greater, a cliff essentially. A house and separated garage structure were built on the only usable land in the early 70s. Primary and secondary deck were constructed about that time. Both decks are now in significant disrepair and are unsafe and unsightly. Our plan is to improve both decks for both safety and for better appearance from the lake. So staff response, according to GIS LiDAR data, the subject property appears to be primarily made up of slopes of 30%, the 30 or more percent. Parcel also contains direct frontage on Lake Pondray and is within FEMA SFHA Zone AE and Zone X. SFHA Zone AE does require floodplain development permitting. Bottle Bay Road cuts through the subject property, leaving a small strip of land on the lakeside portion of the property. This long, narrow strip of land is where the existing development on the property lies. Remaining portion of the property on the west side of Bottle Bay Road is heavily sloped and would prove challenging to develop. Explain how special conditions and circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant. The applicant response, the only action the applicant took was purchasing the parcel in September of 2024. Staff response, the applicant did acquire the subject property via warranty deed, instrument number 1038190, recorded on September 13, 2024. According to Assessor Data, the original dwelling was constructed in 1975. Based on this information, the applicant had no control over the original location of the structure. For the application and narrative, the purposes of this variance is to reconstruct and expand existing decks to improve safety and aesthetics. Finally, explain how granting the variance is not in conflict with public interest, in that it will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, or materially injurious to properties or improvements in the vicinity of the subject parcel or lot. Applicant response, approval of the variance to improve the decks will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, or materially injurious to properties or improvements in the vicinity. Improving the appearance of the decks, house, and garage structure will create a more beautiful lake. Staff response, Idaho Department of Environmental Quality submitted a comment highlighting the importance of development setbacks in protecting water quality. DEQ also recognizes that sometimes there are unique circumstances that may justify reduced setbacks, and exceptions should be considered carefully by the local jurisdiction, and used only when necessary to accommodate unique circumstances. No other comments from the public or any public agency or taxing district were received that stated the proposed project would be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, or materially injurious to the surrounding properties or improvements within the vicinity of this project. Any questions for me?
No.
Perfect.
No, I do not. Thank you. Is the applicant online?
Yes.
Would the applicant like to make a presentation?
No, we appreciate you hearing our case today, and we do have, you know, very little usable land, and the decks would allow us to, you know, enjoy the lake, and as the application said, would also improve the appearance.
Laura, we can't hear you at the moment?
Oh, no.
I don't know if you, is it from their side? You might have, there you go, I think we got you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, there you go. Go ahead.
I'm very sorry about that. I was just saying, thank you for hearing our case today. The case was laid out, thank you for talking through it. I think the primary challenge is with the very steep slope of our lot, there's very little usable land, and it would be really great to be able to enjoy the lake, and those decks would enable us to enjoy the outdoors, and I do believe it would improve what our house looks like from the exterior, because they're very old and kind of dilapidated for the other neighbors around us.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, I'm not going to reread those rules of testimony again. Is there anyone online with any supporting public testimony?
There's nothing else online.
No neutral public testimony online?
Nope.
Any opposing public testimony online? Okay, obviously no one in the audience. All right, so I'm going to close the hearing to public testimony on this File V 0024-25 and render my decision within the next five business days. Dookie. Let me, where are we? All right, any schedule reminders, updates, or announcements?
Alex, I am interim planning director, so we have a meeting on the 15th. We've got a couple files there. I believe, I will let you know prior to where we're having.
It says on the, up here, actually, on the calendar.
Yeah, that's right. So we'll be doing that. I'll also have a schedule for the upcoming year. But together, I've got it over with the Board of County Commissioners' office right now to make sure we've got the rooms in the correct area, but we're sticking with the same first and third Wednesdays for your schedule. If that works for you, I will, I can shoot that off and we can go over on the 15th or whatever.
Okay.
So other than that, I don't have any other.
All righty. Okay, then we are adjourned until the next planning hearing on Wednesday, October 15, 2024.